Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Welcome to the May 20th, 25 City of Kankakee Planning Board Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call. Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Worrum.
Here.
Barry McCracken.
Here.
Arthur Lacks. Jose Arturo Barajas.
Here.
Beverly Hood. Present. Steve Case.
Here.
We have a call. Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the April 15, 2025 minutes? Are there any corrections, changes, or additions? If I can get a motion.
Chip Worrum. Barry McCracken, second.
We have a motion by Chip Worrum and a second by Barry McCracken. Roll call. Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Chip Worrum.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks, he's not here. Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Beverly Hood. Yes. The minutes are approved.
Again, we are still working on QuickTrip's final engineering and that has the plaits have to wait until that's approved before we can finalize them. The map amendment for to rezone 671 North Chicago from R1 to R2 was approved at City Council on May 5.
Okay, those communications were part of the City Council actions. Any other communication?
No.
New business. Case PB 2025-5-1. A public hearing to consider a request for a preliminary plat of subdivision and a conditional use permit for a planned unit development to allow for the construction and operation of a mixed-use development that includes offices, business incubator space, and a new 47-unit residential apartment building for certain real property zones, C3, Central Commercial. The property is located at 250 East Station Street and 310 South Skyler Avenue, also commonly known as 310, 312, 316, 344, and 350 South Skyler, Kankakee, Illinois 60901. The property presently bears the following property tax ID numbers. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? Hello. You can raise your right hand.
Yes.
You sort of tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Brian Lofton.
Okay, Brian, if you want to tell us about your case.
Sure, she's got it up, so I'll get rid of this. Well, this has been a long journey for us, I think since 2018, and so we're happy to be here today with you with this. We've gone through a series of plans with this. I think some of you that remember before, the bank building has really stayed the same as it was from the original planning, where we've made some adjustments, is around the housing portion of it. It's now a 47-unit project and we'll go through that. We've spent an extensive amount of time with City Council, making sure we got to the right mix, the type of balance of the project in terms of the residential and today's, you know, financial piece, but making sure we're making good long-term decisions for the downtown corridor as a whole. So, she alluded to the 310 Skyler Building, which is known as the Midland State's Building, is roughly a 30,000-square-foot building. The business incubator was something that the city had asked for us to work with them on, and in terms of setting up the building itself for that, to allow for the opportunity for this, this really started back in 2018 again with that. It will have ground floor, commercial, as well as office, available on the second floor. 250 East Station Street, which is really the lot that is currently just a parking lot to the west, will then be converted into a 47-unit multifamily. If you can go ahead and switch to the next piece. I won't go too far in this, I think some of you know who we are already from this, but we were founded in 2012. We do specialize in historic adaptive reuse, campus-sized settings. This is a smaller-type project for us, but we're very used to the creation of new construction in complement to historical. There will be historic tax credits involved in the Midland State's Building. There will also be new market tax credits that are part of this, as well as TIF. So, we are very well-versed in the complicated capital stacks that it takes to put this forward and together, and that's part of what allows us to be able to bring this type of a development in Kankakee to the table. Space Architects and Planners has been on this ride with us from the beginning, so they've been very familiar with the process here in Kankakee and with some of our previous presentations that also received approval from a planning standpoint. Go ahead to the next one, Melissa, thank you. This is just familiarizing, I think everybody's probably pretty familiar with the area, but just with the types of buildings that are around in the area, showing we've got mostly, you know, a mix of masonry, a little metal, a little smaller, like everything really on the three stories and below height, and I think that's helpful in being able to envision this and how this ties in in the corridor, with mostly single-story buildings surrounding it to the south and to the east, but getting into two-story and three-story buildings that are, sorry, to the east, to the west, sorry, is the one-story portions of that, turn around backwards, apologize. Go ahead, Melissa. So, this, talking again about the objectives of the market rate, on the right side there, you see example, these are the exact finishes that we bring to this. You've got quartz countertops, you've got your solid wood face cabinets, you've got stainless steel appliances, shower tubs, as well as showers with enclosures in the two bedrooms. On the, in the Kankakee Federal Building, you can see, again, we've talked about it before, but it's currently vacant, and that will be what's reused from a business standpoint. So, on the right is really a representative sample of what it will look like. Those are our standard finishes, which we expect to put in to this project. Go ahead, Melissa. And this is just identifying exactly where it is. Some of this is a part of the process and the application that we needed to provide for you in its conjunction to downtown. Go ahead to the next. Again, identifying some of the main pieces that we're required to put in there in terms of different services, hospitals and the like, location proximity to the library as well. This is the site that I think you saw on the introductory page, that was done before I even stepped up here. So, on the right-hand side of that, the parking lot, that is the area where the 47 units will go, you'll see that in a future slide here, and on the left-hand side of that is the existing bank building. Go ahead, Melissa. So, this is really what the lot subdivision looks like. You can see you've got the bank building on the left, which sits on Skyler, and you've got what will become 250 East Station Street on the right. You'll notice in this, and we'll kind of go through, that we provided a step back from the main street to the east. So, we've done that in addition to the sidewalk being there, an additional greenscape, so we have a softening from the street structure back and not just a three-story building sitting right on the lot line from that. We've created additional green space and areas, anywhere where we don't have a paved piece with that, and the entire property for the, for that residential will be fenced in and will have an automatic gate as a part of the parking system, and you might see that in one of the renderings here as we go forward. Go ahead, Melissa. So, this then again just shows your ingress egress. Again, most of this already exists. We're actually reducing the number of curb cuts in the way that this is created from what's currently there from the parking side, but it shows you the flow that comes in and out. We did the traffic study, it was a minimal impact to this, given the fact that it is only 47 units that are a part of this corner here, but you can see the proximity to bus routes, just stop signs, ingress egress, and I think you're familiar with where the railroad station is, but less than 1,000 feet away to the west. Go ahead. So, the plat of division, we'll have a finalized one, so I know we're getting this as a preliminary that will bring back the final plat, but this will show you how that's, how that's done, how we're combining the lots and how that's being created. Again, although you see two different LLCs, you'll have commonality of ownership and you'll have the same single manager for both of the pieces, even though it will eventually be two separate LLCs as part of this. On the left-hand side in the tiny print that I can't even read from here is the timeline, and really that's just mapping out what's already been agreed to in the development with the city. So, this is one of the first steps here, was getting this application in with you folks so we could continue to move this forward and advance. We will also have the plans being submitted here into permitting within the week, so that will stay on the review there. I think the next real milestone will be the city getting the final approval for the Rivers Edge Historic Tax Credit, which is a piece with this. That's for the 310 holdings. Again, on the 250 holding side, which is the residential, we're really into an August timeframe when those permits or those plans will be submitted for permitting there, but again, looking to start construction again this year in October on that portion of it as well. So, this is a rendering of the look of this. You can see a mixture of materials that are involved here, a changing of heights at the parapet, a stepping back and forth as the materials, as well as there's also a depth change in addition to that, lots of windows to bring in light with that. This you can see representative really on the ground level, the creation of bushes and trees and landscaping, again, softening the building as well, so it's not sitting right on the lot line, but stepped back a bit for that. This is a three-story walk-up is how it's being designed and built, a stick-built structure. It does also have a rooftop deck, which we'll see in another spot with that, and it's a combination of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, which we'll also see in further. So, there will be an entrance to the building on the, excuse me, the east side, as well as an entrance from the parking lot, which is on the west side. Go ahead, Melissa. No one's can read this, but this is your breakdown of first, second, and third floor, and I think in your package you'll be able to see that, what they are in terms of square footages, the mix of one-bedroom, one bath, and two-bedroom, one bath. Again, the demand is 210 new units, right? That's what really came back from the report to absorb in the next year, so we're providing a portion of that. Obviously, not all of it that's needed within the community, but that's a bit of where we've placed this and put it together on this particular lot. And this is the ground floor. A couple of things that had been requested in City Council was the creating of, you know, some sort of a patio area on the ground floor. You can see that denoted at the top, just a little bit to the right where it says patio, plan for grilling stations and those to be there, a small gathering amenity space, a flux space that can be used for the tenants on that. The pink units are really your one-bedroom, one baths, and the greens that you see on the corner represent your two-bedroom, one baths on that side. Go ahead. Second floor, somewhat similar, obviously where we had the entryway, you now have the addition of another unit in that spot, same for the third floor. As it just stair steps up, and then the rooftop, I think, is the next, showing where we have a rooftop deck area centered on the building, obviously views directly east, west, north, and south, and the connection that is required to both of the stairwells at the rooftop Again, this is just really demonstrating the tax impact here, so obviously we're drastically improving the vacant lot, obviously improving the existing building. It does create an increased value in the TIF that allows for the financing that's involved with the, with the TIF portion of it. The developer, we've already entered into a pilot agreement with the city and will guarantee the minimum equalized assessed value that's shown below, so that was a part of the development agreement also. I think that's the last slide of here, so now I'm open for any questions or thoughts anyone has.
I didn't see a pool.
No pool, no. I think we could have had one maybe 10 hours and a half ago with the rain that was here, but yeah. Now, no pool yet.
No pool.
No pool yet.
Deb Terrell here.
Yes.
Can you explain to me the pilot program? Does that work?
Oh, boy, we're going to get into the weeds. Yeah, so a pilot program is basically a guaranteed minimum amount that we agree to pay. So, the way tax increment financing works, and this is a pay-go-TIF, so the city is not like saying, hey, we're going to give you $6 million, that's not how this, this works. So, what we do is you create the tool for that, so we increase the assessed value on the property, I'm going to just say for random, it's worth $10 now, after we build everything, it's worth $100. So, of that $90 additional that was created, city still gets the other 10% that was always there, of the $90 that were created there, a portion of that goes to developer to pay back a loan that was taken out against the future tax incentive, and the balance of that then goes back to the city as an increase.
That's what I was wondering about the loan element of it, because I didn't understand how that.
Yeah.
Put the money in your pocket.
Yeah, so it's financed through another portion that brings it straight to the table, but they're guaranteed that they're going to get paid back by the minimum pilot agreement, that's a part of that. So, that's as baseline as I can, I can explain it.
Yeah. Well, that answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Any security concerns?
Not anymore than we would have anywhere else. Again, we have a single entrance on the east side of the building, so there's not multiple points within the side of that. We, again, we are gating the parking garage, or parking area with that, and it does have a scan code gate that will be there that will open and close that, so that is just a portion of what we have in place. Yes, sir.
Chip Worrum, I have a question on facilities management, in terms of what your plans are for that, and if you sell it, how that transfers to the next owner, should that happen. The reason that I'm worried about that, and I'd like to know more about that, is because the more well-cared-for a facility is.
Sure.
The longer it serves, not only the owners, but the community, you know, it goes beyond, you know, its initial run. So, can you speak to how you're handling that?
Yeah, I'll speak at a few different levels to that, and we do have some unique financing things that also kind of ties this together, but as a company as a whole, we are not a build, fill-up, and sell company, we're a long-term hold company. Because of the involvement with historic tax credits, there's also a five-year recapture period that's a part of that, but actually there's longer than that because we have the new market tax credits portions on this, which is actually seven years on that piece. So, you're looking at a minimum of seven years from the date of completion that we would still be involved with that before we could even sell it to begin with from that piece, but it is always our intention to have a long-term hold with this, and these two, these two spaces go together. Obviously, we have this active commercial center here, and we also have a residential piece, so in a way we are, we are becoming a proponent of both of those types of things being, being able to be used in downtown, right? And we've seen that done pretty successfully here on several different types of project. I think Dustin Coy has done a great job of balancing some commercial and then some residential, right, above that. So, it's following, you know, those types of pieces with it. We do self-manage all of our properties currently, so we do take that responsibly on ourselves and don't just ship that outside to a third-party group to do. The fact with the new construction, the type of materials that we're choosing, and the fact of how it's a, I say a market rate piece with this, it's just going to be continued investment in the property. But number one is we are not a build, fill, and sell company, that's not how we were put together, it's a longer-term hold than that, and then the second is we're bound by some of the financial commitments, both through the historic and the new markets, to also stay in the deal.
How do you fund that?
Chip, can you speak into your mic?
Okay.
How do you, how does that get funded? You know, because it's like if an air conditioner breaks or all of the ongoing things that just wear out, you know? Is that built? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's actually all built in the underwriting as a part of that, so there's a, there's a capex portion that's a part of the modeling that goes with the underwriting that you're actually sweeping every month that goes into a capex program, and then you're anticipating that eventually there will be 10 years from now or 11 years from now, you could have something with a heating unit or an air conditioning unit.
Right.
That's with that, yeah, but that's a natural part of the underwriting process. Thank you.
Do you have an onsite leasing office and a, like, a manager onsite or anything like that?
Yeah, it's kind of a small property to have, a full-time someone always sitting there, so we are already talking with, I may be spoiling the name that I mentioned, of some other groups that are local here and working together for a ground presence that's here with us on that site, but I think initially for the lease-up, yes, there'd be somebody there with that. Once it's leased, no, there wouldn't be an onsite leasing with that, again, it's, with it being just 47 units.
Okay.
This is Steve Case. Just a quick question about parking. Looks like roughly one spot per apartment?
It's 48 total spaces, or yeah, 47 units.
And being right downtown, I assume there, there may be a lot, would there be any consideration of spot in this for bicycle parking?
We're definitely going to accommodate for that. It's not in the current drawings, but yes, bicycle for sure, to meet the code at a minimum.
Barry McCracken, so you've got two different LLCs, can you speak to that?
We're giving that flexibility right now because that's what may be needed from the financing side, so it is possible that the housing itself does become a part of the new market tax credit deal, but that depends on which new market CDI, which is basically who invests in the, in the new market tax credit, actually invests in the project. So, regardless of whether it'll be two or to be one that maintains both, it'll be a single ownership that's above that with one manager, same manager, which would be Josh Jeffers.
Okay.
Did I explain that adequately?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one other, Barry McCracken, again, so how many units was it originally? This is 47 now, what was it originally?
92 was the original, and it was a podium, so it had parking and then a concrete podium structure and stick build above to get to the 92 units that were part of that original. We worked, again, tirelessly with the city to figure out how to close that gap, and we could not get to a gap that closed, that allowed for it to be feasible to advance. So, changing the type of construction, basically taking the parking from outside of that, getting rid of the concrete podium structure, going to a stick build is what reduced the cost per unit cost, which allows us to advance now.
So, there was a financial gap?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah, again, 2018, if you remember when we started this, and what's happened from then to now, the world has changed quite a bit on a few fronts, and I haven't heard anything today, I think we're still friends with who we were at the beginning of the day and it hasn't changed yet, so.
So, these bulk zoning regulations, I don't know who to direct this question to, Ms. King or, or you, but all of the blue highlighted areas are the deviations from the current zoning regulation, correct?
That is correct.
And would creating the PUD bring all those into compliance?
Correct, so the PUD regulates the overall development.
Okay.
And they're, and the way PUDs work is that you call these out as deviations, or some communities call them exceptions or modifications, it's all the same thing. They're treated different than variances because PUDs innately are just like a flexible zoning tool, they can allow you to approve development that may not meet code exactly, and we're getting a benefit, and in this case, we're getting, I think, quite a bit of benefit, you know, with the residential dwellings that we need desperately, as well as economic benefit for the downtown, as well as beautiful building architecture that's way above and beyond what's code required, so all those things are, it's kind of a push-and-pull tool. So, yeah, all those deviations are listed in the findings that will be presented as part of the, the package to council, and they'll also go into ordinance.
Apart from Meadowview and the Riverside Residential Complex out there, which are both PUDs, are there other examples of PUDs?
I don't know, Deb. I never asked that question, I think.
Sorry.
Just being relatively new, I don't know if I have a grasp on every PUD that's ever been approved by the, by the city. I could find out relatively fast. I want to say that, and I have an inventory of the ordinances now that I can, I search through quite frequently for just research purposes, and I feel like I don't see quite that many, and there haven't been any recently, not many. West Harbor was a PUD, so that Housing Authority project was a PUD, but then there was a number, I think, earlier, you know, 80s, 90s, but there's not been many.
Yeah. Yeah, apart from the Housing Authority one, the last one I can remember doing was Meadowview, wasn't it?
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, Mike didn't do any others, West Harbor was the only one.
Okay. Yeah, Meadowview was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think East Court Village was, was a PUD.
What was?
East Court Village might have been a PUD, the mid-rise elderly housing on East Court.
Oh, okay.
Just east of 57, that might have been a PUD, but again, that's back in the 70s, I'm not sure if I have that right or not. But yeah, you're right, we haven't had that many.
I guess my, the question that's rolling around in my head here is if, if a PUD takes in, what, a dozen or more deviations from code, what doesn't it allow?
Well, I think that when we're looking at these, we always have, we should be looking at each one of these and making sure that we feel like they're justified. So, right now, the plans as presented, for instance, don't have bicycle parking on them. I know that seems like a really simple, low-hanging fruit to talk about, but I told them that they have to meet code. So, it's not, I'm here in a blue, and it's not going into the findings, because in Site Planner Review, they will have to meet that ordinance.
Okay.
So, I think that we need to be looking at these to make sure they're reasonable for the PUD, and I don't have any issues with any of these. The PUD regulations, and I do talk about this in here, some of them seem to be fighting against what we actually allow in the downtown, like the parking regulations, for instance. There's, there's like a, like a stepped range of parking requirements for any PUD, and it's based on bedrooms, I think I'd have to go back and look, but we have new downtown parking regulations that allow for reduced parking for residential, no parking for non-residential, and those things are put, were put forward and through a code change here very recently because we have tons of downtown parking, and we're trying to push that and lower those minimum parking regulations, and so I, and here I put that recommendation that we just, we direct ourselves to those C3 regulations and almost like waive the PUD regulations because they don't make sense. Instead of making some kind of deviation to like amend that number and reduce it, I'm just asking us to look at the C3 regulations instead, in lieu of, so.
And that was on page eight?
Correct, and.
Melissa, do you have a copy of that, by chance? I don't have the blue.
Of these?
Yes.
You can look for them.
It's not here.
Oh, you need it, though.
I've got it virtually, so I've got it virtually.
On page eight, it has the waiving of the PUD regulations.
So, page three are the bulk regulations under C3, and then, and also the PUD regulations in a table, and then there's a parking breakdown on page four.
I'm not seeing anything in here about accessibility. It's a three-story walk-up?
Yeah, it is a three-story walk-up, and, and per code, that is allowed with the type of construction, yes.
Okay.
And in terms of, everything will follow code in terms of accessibility within units that are required within the code, so.
So, you don't have to provide accessibility for guests?
No.
Okay.
Not under the code with this type of construction.
What about handicap parking spaces?
It's usually, there's one that's created, I think, with the, given this number of units, yeah.
It's usually one for 25.
Whatever it ends up being, we'll meet what that code is with that, but in terms of the specific code with the stick-built three-story walk-up elevator is not required for that, and in terms of the parking, we'll meet whatever the standard requirement is from handicap and accessibility.
Is, is the ADA in consideration for the apartment building, or is it the Fair Housing Act? Which one is the jurisdiction for, for compliance?
So, it, we're willing to comply with whatever the, the city ordinance is basically, not ordinance, but the, but the code is, yeah, with that, but the federal side has to do with the type of money you have as to what is required or not from the financing side.
Because it's residential, I could see it going to the Fair Housing Act, which has its own standards that are somewhat separate from the American.
If we were doing an FHA loan, yes.
I don't even know if you can get around that, I think it's just, you got to do it.
We, we build all over the country, we'll follow whatever the code is that's required for that, yeah, and to Melissa's point, all of this will have to go through review and then be approved, so we're not, it's not like you're putting this through and then it's not going to have to go through a review process with third-party architect and all the process with that.
This is a tremendous amount of information, right?
That's one thing, and, and you know, and you've done a lot of work.
Yeah.
We have collectively done a lot of work, I would say.
And, and, you know, the forced pause has probably given you a chance to really be more thorough than you would be because you have more time.
But, true, I guess that's a, that's a true statement, yeah.
You know, just as, as a, as a member of the planning board, it'd be great to be able to see this stuff, you know, a little bit more as. you know, a little bit more as it comes along, just so that we can be up to speed, you know? And, you know, I feel that there's so much content here, I feel like I don't know if I can do a good enough job because of all the analysis that has to happen.
Yeah, I think, so the original, how this went through, and I'm not sure why now it has to come before the plan development, because it didn't in the first iteration. And we actually had issued permitted sets for both the ninety-two unit and for that, so I'm not exactly sure what led to that, you might know.
I can clarify, it did be the conditional use permit, so it did come before planning board, but it was a different process, it wasn't a PUD. And the difference is that our, the original project did not have residential on the first floor, so C-three, which is the underlying zoning district, only allows for second-floor residential through a conditional use permit process. So, and I did go back and, when you guys applied, and we talked about this, I did go back and just verify with Mike that my thinking wasn't incorrect, so there's either two options with a, technically a prohibited use to have residential on the first floor, per the code in C-three. So you either rezone to R-three, which I wasn't super excited about, in the middle of our C-three in downtown, or you go down the PUD route to allow for kind of alternative flexible land uses governed by the PUD. And that's the route we ended up taking for this one.
Yeah, I think the other part of it, in terms of the timing, so this has been a long way to get here. We've been in front of city council multiple times, trying to find the right mix of pieces. Affordable was a conversation as a part of this. What we settled on was the market rate in this portion. And then that approval for the development agreement, which you saw we had to sign the next week, already had all these dates that we had to meet. So like the train had already started, and we had to advance forward, you know, based on some of those, I won't call them handcuffs, but the provisions that were put in together with the development agreement. And some of that, I think, is deal fatigue for everyone, wanting to make sure this happens and that we move it forward, and we make it, not a dream anymore, but a reality, if that makes sense.
Barry McCracken again, so on the east elevation, it shows aluminum louvered sunshade. What is that exactly?
Let me, can I just walk over to you, take a look at it?
Yeah.
It is...
Basically, it's a reveal detail that happens above the window. So I remember we talked about changing of depths that happened with that. So it's not just a flat wall surface and then the flat window that comes down. There's actually a piece or trim that comes out off the top of the window. It's made of aluminum, that has like a, it's called a trim shade, but it's basically an eyebrow detail that gives some depth to the building.
Okay, so it's just a six inches or three inches, whatever it might be?
Yeah, you've got it.
Its purpose is to reduce solar gain, since it's facing east for that portion of the day.
So it is functional as well as aesthetic?
Yeah.
Mostly aesthetic, I would say. And one of the requests that came in the city council side, providing some of that depth for it.
And that's all the way across, and then, is that just...
No, it's just above the windows, I think that it's called out. Again, this is something to, we'll go in front for the plan review, right, when it goes in, for the permitting and that side of it, there is another conversation that can be had at that point around any changes or adjustments, or if you have something to date to. We are not stuck on that has to be what goes in that spot. Again, we're trying to serve a few different masters in terms of opinions of how that works. We don't think it's a make or break either way, detail on the building.
So is that on every floor?
I believe it's at every window is where it's called for right now, in the detail. But again, doesn't need to be.
Any other questions? If not, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have two action items, a recommendation on preliminary plat and a conditional use permit.
Chairman Hood, or Chairwoman Hood, I'm so sorry. May I have a few clarifications?
Sure.
Okay. I don't know, Member Terrell, if you would like to go through the deviations? Would you like to go through them? I have a couple comments about a few of them.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't hurt, would it?
If you guys want to turn to page nine in the staff report?
So the deviations to the zoning and subdivision regulations?
Correct, yep. So number one, obviously, is the allowance of the residential on the first floor, which I think is justified. The code also requires that residential uses be accessed through a non-residential lobby under the C-three regulations, so this is basically just a call out that there'll be access to a residential lobby. Number three is that our parking code requires ten feet back from a frontage, so their plans show four, I think that's fine as well in this case. Six, seven, and eight have been under review with fire. Right now, fire did provide some preliminary comments, including wanting to have an additional access point out of the back, which would just be for emergency vehicles. The petitioner has indicated that they'll work with fire to achieve that. I think some of these comments came last week, and I think that we should maybe add that in here, just that they'll work with fire to provide whatever necessary access they can provide as one of the additional conditions. And then six, seven, and eight are physical dimensions of the access or the ingress and egress points on all three points. They all kind of measure at a different spot. The commercial access that's coming off of Skyler is the one that has the twenty-two-foot road width. The one that's eighteen is the residential entrance, which is kind of small, especially for like a fire truck access. So again, these are called out as deviations, and then there's a right-of-way radius also that's connecting, that's very small as well. And I think I would like to add some language in here that, on the conditions, that the applicant, like try to work with us to appease fire, and making sure that we're meeting circulation and auto turn and things like that for our emergency vehicles to get in and out of the site. I'm okay with deviation so long as it's meeting accessibility for those vehicles. Yeah. Do you want to add something?
No, I would say we totally agree with you on that, and I think the discussion we had with fire is the drive-through coming through on that side, then it goes into an alleyway that's a straight ninety-degree turn. So we want to work with them to figure out, is that the right spot? Do we need to adjust the driveway, is there some other way to do that? But yes, obviously, we're open to getting fire vehicles in.
Sure, yeah. Number nine is the setbacks, and there's PUD setbacks. So, and we can turn and look at these if you want to. This is much like the parking regulations, so there's, the PUD itself, that section calls out setbacks for buildings taller than twenty-four feet in height that are non-residential. This is actually referring to the existing building, and then there's some for residential as well, and those setbacks are pretty large, required thirty-two feet based on the height of that building. And so you can imagine if we allowed that in our downtown, that setback is quite large and not really what we're trying to achieve for the downtown. So again, these are, just like the parking regulations, I'm asking to waive those regulations and point back to the C-three as what would be required for this development. And then they are also fencing in the entire property. A portion of it will obstruct what's considered the front yard, and so I just put that in here as well. It's a little low-hanging fruit, but I think it's important for us to call out because it will be a six-foot fence, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're saying of the front yard, so it's really from the back half of the building? So everything from the west?
The front yard, the way the zoning code sees it, is from the front of the building to the front lot line, and one of the lot, the lot line where the residential unit is, is really along Station, technically, by the zoning. It's not where the building faces, it's where the shortest lot line is.
Okay, so just sort of want to clarify with everyone, the plan is then, the west-facing side of the building, it would come off...
Right, it goes off, it goes north to Station and around, but because it breaks that, what the zoning code considers the front yard.
I just wanted to make sure, we're not going around the sidewalk, all around on the east side, in the front yard setting there, just to make sure.
And I think you can see it, actually, I put the landscape plan in here so we could look at it, but it may not be, it's kind of hard to see.
I think it shows in the rendering, actually, if we go back to the rendering. You can see there's no fencing there on the front side.
Yeah, it goes around, yeah. It kind of like juts out in the plan, Brian, about five feet north of the building right there. It doesn't go in front of the building, but it goes like, yeah, it breaks that plane. Mm-hmm, yep.
I just didn't want to make it think we're really fencing all across the car.
Right. And then another clarification is that we have a sketch plat from them, but not a fully worked-up preliminary plat. The preliminary plat will still have to come back for another hearing on its own, but I feel comfortable, this is a very simple subdivision that's attached to this, it's technically consolidations on two lots, but it's going to govern the overall PUD anyways. We do have a sketch plat, and I would prefer that that language under the motion be a sketch plat, which is what it's called in the zoning ordinance as well.
Chip Warham, I have a question on, sorry I didn't get to this before we got to here, but the question that I have is that, you know, we have forty-seven, forty-eight parking places that are on-site, and then the remainder of the parking that people need to have is going to be off-site at various parking lots, you know, nearby. The one thing that comes to my mind is that there is a certain degree of safety for those spaces that are adjacent to the building. But as we get further out into downtown, is there something that we have discussed with law enforcement to make sure that it's a safe kind of a transition so somebody walking from remote parking to the building is a safe thing? I mean, I don't know if that's been discussed.
I mean, I'm not sure what you would be looking for, so we, there's, that road is fully, has streetlights on both sides, and there's, they're going to be rebuilding sidewalks. I don't, when you come from the, the main entrance to the building is going to be off of Dearborn.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct, so they'll have to walk around the corner. I'm assuming they'll be able to use the lot that's just to the north, is a public lot.
I think your question is more broader than just this location, I thought to that, right? Because there's, you've gone from having the ability of no parking and some of that, and what's the right balance with it? So we don't feel anything less than one-to-one makes any sense. We do feel comfortable with the one-to-one plus the one extra, which would be the handicap spot typically, additional spot with that, where we're given the number of one-bedroom units that we have here, right, and the types of runners with that. So we're less concerned about having too many cars with that. We don't see this as a family-type building just because of the one-bedrooms and the two-bedroom side of that. But you ask a good question, that's a longer-term one. I think that's even past what our...
It is, yeah, but it's the kind of thing that, you know, there are municipal services that will support you in what you're doing, and I don't know if that's been discussed yet. That's just something that I would hope we would have a conversation about, about public safety.
And we want to be a part of that, with you.
And essential.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we would support that.
So as a procedural question, this is Steve Case. Would this be two separate motions? The motion for the preliminary plat and then the motion for the conditional use permit?
I think we should, yes.
And would the conditional use permit motion be the one where we're talking about the language about accommodating fire and things like that?
Correct.
Okay, well, I want to make the easy motion then.
You vote for the plat? Got it.
Thanks, David.
Here for you guys. If we're ready to act, sorry.
Yes, we are.
Short-circuit anything. Okay, well, then I'll make a motion on case PB two-two-five-five-one. I would make a motion that we approve the request for a preliminary plat of subdivision for this property with the ID numbers as listed in the planning board findings.
I want to clarify what, that's a sketch plat at this stage?
Thank you, sketch plat.
Do we approve or recommend approval?
Recommend.
Recommend.
Thank you. I recommend approval.
I'll second to that.
We have a motion by Steve Case and a second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The sketch plat is recommended for approval.
Okay, conditional use permit.
Oh, come on, Deb.
All right, case PB twenty-two-five-five-one. In a request for a conditional use permit for a planned unit development to allow for the construction and operation of a mixed-use development that includes offices, business incubator space, and forty-seven-unit residential apartment building for a certain real property, Zone C-three, Central Commercial located at two-fifty East Station Street and three-ten South Skyler. I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of this conditional use permit. Would you like for me to read the findings or just attach the findings?
You can just attach the findings, that's fine.
And I'm just going to attach the findings set forth by the planning department, but I would also like to specify that they include the allowance of residents on the first floor, residence used to be accessed through a residential lobby, reduce the parking setback from a frontage from the required ten to four feet, reduce the access drive width at the row from twenty-four feet to eighteen feet for the residential entrance, reduce the access drive width at the, I don't know what ROW is.
The right-of-way.
Right-of-way, okay, that makes sense. From twenty-four feet to twenty-two feet for the non-residential entrance, reduce the minimum return radius at the right-of-way from thirty feet to ten feet, waive the PUD regulation for setbacks of buildings and apply C-three Central Commercial setback regulations, waive the PUD requirements or regulations for parking and apply downtown parking district regulations, allow a six-foot iron-open perimeter fence on the residential lot, and the fence will obstruct the front yard. And also that the developer work with the Kankakee Fire Department on a safety plan for emergency access slash ingress egress. Can you add number one and two on page eight? Did I skip those? Okay. Oh, yes, we are also waiving the PUD regulation for setbacks of buildings and applying the C-three Central Commercial setback regulations instead. We are waiving the PUD regulations for parking and apply downtown parking district regulations. And Madam Chairman, if I didn't say so before, this is for a sketch plat? Is that, no, that's not...
This is the conditional, this is the conditional use for the PUD.
All right, I didn't need to say that.
You're good.
That's my story. Thank you. We have a motion by Deb Terrell.
Second.
Second by Chip Warham. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The conditional use permit is recommended for approval with conditions, and if our counsel can handle all of my cases in drafting, they will all go to June... I apologize, for June second? That's the hope, so.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case. PB twenty-two-five-five-two. A public hearing to consider a request to rezone certain real property located at seven-seven-seven North Kennedy Drive, Kankakee, Illinois, six-zero-nine-zero-one, from C-one Neighborhood Commercial to R-one Single Family Residential. The subject property presently bears the following property tax ID number sixteen-dash-zero-nine-dash-thirty-one-dash-two-one-two-dash-zero-one-three. Will the applicant for this case please come forward? Hello? If you could state your name?
Ray Lazarek.
And if you could raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could tell us about your case, sir?
It was a law office, it was a home that was used as a law office. I just want to put it back as a home. put it back as a home.
Any questions? Any communications regarding this case? No questions? I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
This particular property, what's adjacent to it? Give me a visual of what?
There's another house right next door to it, and the empty lot next to that.
What's the nearest cross street?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Williams.
It's Williams.
Williams.
Right, and there's, there's-
There is a small commercial building just north of it.
On the southwest corner of Kennedy and, and-
Williams.
It was a heating and ventilating shop at that time.
I don't think anything's in there now.
Okay.
I remember it.
Okay.
And then there's houses.
Right.
To the south.
There's the empty lot to the north, and then my house, and then rest of, rest of our homes.
Barry McCracken, so it was a house that was made in commercial for an attorney's office?
Yeah.
And now you're, okay, now you're switching it back to residential?
Correct.
Okay, and you're doing a lot of work to the, to the house?
The house is done, you know, it really didn't need a lot of work in there, it just added kitchen and all that already. As I said, it was just a house that was converted into, into a house, or into a law office. Okay.
Has it been unoccupied?
It was unoccupied for, he passed away, I believe, like in December last year, not this past year, and I bought his personal home and his law office, like back in July.
Are you planning to rent it or live in it, or what?
Sell it.
Sell it?
Yeah.
It's a cute little house.
Yeah. Good neighborhood.
Yeah. Any other questions? Are we ready to act?
Yes.
Okay.
Case number PB 2025-5-2, a request for a map amendment to rezone certain real property located at 777 North Kennedy Drive, Kankakee, Illinois, 60901, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential. We recommend this one, right?
Correct.
We recommend that this, this action be heard by the city council, that the standards that are used to evaluate map amendments are included, and the recommendation on the amendment from staff is also included.
Barry McCracken, second.
We have a motion by Chip Warham and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Taylor?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The motion passes, and again, the target is June 2nd at city council.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, PB 2025-5-3, a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit for billboard sign, and a major variance to reduce the minimum setback from a residential zoning district from the minimum five hundred feet to two hundred and sixty-six feet for certain real property presently bearing the PN 16-09-34-100-033. The applicant is present.
Good evening.
If you could state your name, please?
Steve Hoekstra.
And if you could raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you wanted to go ahead and tell us about your case?
This request is made as an extension of my current billboard business. It's one sign that I've got right now currently on a property on East Gate Industrial that borders up against I-57. I have another piece of property just north of that, and so I would like to put another billboard up. The current billboard is a digital, LED digital sign. I would propose that this one be the same size, except it would be a static billboard.
Okay.
And lighted.
Internally, Steve?
External.
External, okay, thank you.
This is Steve Case. Could you speak a little bit about the reason for being, for not doing an electronic versus a static? What was sort of went into that decision?
Couple things, one is cost. Second is, I'm not a sign guy, you know, that's, I had an opportunity when I bought the property on East Gate, found out that we could put billboards up. I wanted to put a digital sign up because of the flexibility, and I think it would draw attention to the area. Almost exclusively, everybody on that current billboard are Kankakee businesses, so the, what I found out, there are certain advertising segments that prefer static, so I wanted to go static because of cost, and I'm not a full-time sales, so I've got, it makes honestly a little bit easier, so I don't have to sell as often trying to fill a billboard. Fortunately, the, the digital board is full for eighteen months now, so that's, that's good, but I really don't want to commit to that much time to selling billboard space, and there are advertisers that prefer static boards.
And you mentioned your other billboard, is that either of these just to the north or to the south of the proposed?
The current billboard is to the south, yes.
So, on this information that we have, the one to the south is yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you clarify, it is illuminated though, right?
It will be illuminated.
Just static, and that means that you'll, like, never change it, or?
No, it will be changed as the advertiser, my goal is to-
As you just get a new lease from a new advertiser?
Either that, or as the advertisers want to freshen up the board. My goal is to have long-term leases, because I, I'm going to, I have an idea who I want to target for that board, and those are typically places that like to have long-term leases, and that's going to be my target, so it will rotate as the customer would request, or as I get a new customer for that board, yes.
If, what's not in here is any regulations with regard to any, because you do have the ability to change that messaging, there isn't anything in here that controls that, I'm just letting, in the conditions currently, and I don't know if this is worth discussion with you standing here, and what you would feel comfortable with, like, if, because I do think that there should be something, because if, you don't own it anymore, that somebody can do whatever they want, if they have control over that messaging changing. But it could be something as simple as every, more than once a day. I don't, you know, I think, we just had to have the conversation, I think.
Okay.
That's my recommendation, sorry.
One thing that I'm, I'm getting here, you know, is, this is sort of an old-school billboard, where it's not internally illuminated, it's external, you know, the lights shine up on, on the content.
Yep, if you're familiar with, on 57, right by Grinnell, that billboard that's there, Taylor's on one side, and Loves is on the other, it'd be similar to that.
Right, so the content, isn't, isn't it no change on an hourly basis or a daily basis?
I think it'd be cost-prohibitive to do it even monthly.
The sign is not internally illuminated.
No.
It's externally illuminated.
Right.
Okay, so that is, thank you for that clarification. I think I was still thinking that it was internally illuminated.
No, it'll be external too.
Perfect.
Yes.
Got it. I see a notation here that the billboard as proposed encroaches on the storm sewer and drain adjustment, and that it's being recommended that it's shifted east twenty feet. Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hoekstra, how much control do you have over the lighting, right? So, for instance, if residents across the highway start complaining about it being too bright, or if, you know, I don't know how often we do, I know there is some sort of policy about, you know, what, how bright lights have to be at the property line, correct? For, to be considered a nuisance. Do you, do you have the, if you own the billboard, do you have the ability to, like, dim the lights if the people in the subdivision across the highway are like, that's just, that's just too bright?
You know, I don't know, I'm sure there's a way to control that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the functionality would be there.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable, I think, consideration across the highway, but I think that with 57, a divided highway, and I think with the lighting, with the new exit that's coming, I don't think it'll be a nuisance. That's the last thing I'd want to be, as a nuisance to the neighbor, so.
And I guess this is, this kind of then comes to the question about the code. What, what is the rationale behind the minimum five hundred feet? Is that for light nuisance? Is that for, we don't, we don't know.
I really don't, I, I really don't know. I wasn't here for that, I don't know if that was, if that's a newer regulation, I think this group could probably answer that better than me, if we used to have a distance regulation. I don't think we had, the conditional use I know wasn't required, because I think that that was a change that was just made recently. So, I don't, I really don't know. I would think that it's, I think that the code does allow them to be illuminated internally, and for messaging to be changed, and so my guess is that that's what that is for, Steve.
The five hundred feet?
Yeah, I would think maybe that that's why that's-
Yeah, I can't think of another reason.
I can't think of another reason why. Because there's no noise nuisance, I mean-
Right.
Yeah.
What are the businesses just to the east and west of your property?
East and west of the property, so, of the property, west is the highway, and east of this would be the bus garage for District 111.
The school district.
Oh, okay.
And then there's houses along Hamis Avenue.
Uh-huh.
Yes, Mary.
Across.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Have we heard anything from the alderman in this case?
I did send them this when we first received the application, they've also gotten the packet. I don't think I've heard from either of them, good, I mean, good or bad, like, no concerns.
And again, just so I'm clear, as far as the variances go, the only reason that a variance is required in this instance is the distance to the residential zone. Really, really the only thing at, at question is the, the distance to the residential lots across the highway.
Correct, and I'm actually gonna, Steve, I'm looking at it real quick, just to make sure, because I had that, I was thinking it was internally illuminated, so I want to make sure that that's not tied to the internal illumination, just give me a minute.
Sure.
Okay, it says, "Billboard's allowed in I-1, I-2, subject to a conditional use. Billboards shall not be located within five hundred feet of another billboard," which we've shown that. "We're allowed one billboard per lot." Billboard signs oriented towards an interstate highway located within six hundred and sixty feet of a right-of-way line of an interstate highway and located a minimum of five hundred feet from a lot located on a residential zoning district, shall not exceed a max-" Yeah, it's just a general distance, Steve. It's not, has nothing to do with the illumination, it's just a restrict, it's just a regulation that it has to be five hundred.
Right, but I guess, I guess my point is, the, I'm guessing the reasoning for that distance was illumination nuisance, right? I mean, I wouldn't want, I mean, if, if there were properties on, you know, on the east side, right, I wouldn't necessarily want a billboard, you know, behind my backyard, within, you know, a hundred feet of my back porch, not only is it going to be tall and ugly, but there's going to be all of this ambient light cast up into my-
I would think so, and I, it doesn't say in here that it's tied to that at all in any way, and the illumination can happen no matter what, as long as you're granted this conditional use. There's no separate thing that says, like, you have to be whatever in order to have it illuminated, so, I mean, maybe we should clarify that in the code, if we don't-
Is there, does this fall under the more general umbrella of, and forgive me, but I thought there was something in the code about, you know, if, if my neighbor puts up floodlights in their backyard, and we can show that there's a certain, you know, intensity of lumens at my property line-
Like a foot candle?
That's a problem.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So, is this a similar situation, where if the people across the interstate are saying, that is, that's really, really bright, and we can see that it's above a certain foot candle at that distance?
Yeah. So, since he's lighting, we can require him to provide a photometric. I mean, I, my guess is that the problem with that is going to be any kind of conflict with the lights that are, on, if there are any lights on the highway.
Correct.
Which I don't know if there are or not, but sometimes, I mean, that will skew the foot candles.
Right, and you've got traffic going down the highway all the time.
Correct.
So, okay.
Yeah, so I, but, I mean, you can't, we could do that, like, in the future, we could, we have the ability to ask for those photometrics if we need them, to prove that there's an issue, like, but, I probably wouldn't do it in this case, because I feel like there's, it's, to me, it feels like it's so far away and across the highway, but, and it's not, and now we're talking about a sign that's not internally illuminated, it's just going to have, like, lights on the face of it.
Right.
So, that bothers me less. There's, so, if he, if his sign face was less than the 672, and it was three hundred square feet, a much smaller billboard, then you wouldn't have to comply with these regulations.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, so, like, it's smaller, but he doesn't want to make it smaller, he wants to have that maximum size, he's allowed facing an interstate.
How tall is the billboard?
The maximum height, well, right now, my planning on the height being fifty-five feet to the top. That's about where I'm at today.
Okay, and the lights are going to be?
Up.
Up light.
Shining on the subject matter.
Yep.
I don't see that as a problem for the homes.
Yeah.
Because it's fifty-five feet, and that you're, you're, what, these are single-story houses, they're what, fifteen feet?
No more, more than, no more than that.
No more than that.
Yeah.
So, you're, you're forty feet above that with the lights shining up at the billboard.
Correct, so you're still adding to light pollution, you're still shining light into the sky.
True.
So, if you do have, you know, if you do have people that are taking their telescopes into the backyard, they're going to be cranky, but we haven't gotten any complaints from anyone about this.
Right, I mean, just two properties down from this, across in the same neighborhood, is the, is the illuminated one with changing messaging. I mean, I'm not, I, I don't know of any complaints on that billboard.
I have not received any, personally.
Okay.
I, I think the thing that we have here is, is that-
Chip.
Chip Warham, the thing that we have here is, is that, you know, there was a big concern over illumination of LED lighting, internally illuminated lighting that could be seen from a great distance.
I think we're going to be talking about that with some of these next cases.
Yeah, yeah, and, but what, what Steve's talking about here is, is-
Tradition.
A board that is lit with something that's probably called sign lighters, it's the LED equivalent of a sign lighter, and what that does is it can be literally dialed in to shine right on the subject matter, you know, and we could get photometrics on that, but, I mean, that's the nature of it. It's an old-school way of doing it, but it's very effective.
Any other questions?
Arturo Barajas, my question is, are they electricity or sun-operated, or?
It is electricity, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let the record show that Arthur Lacks is present. I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so Seeing there are none, public hearing is closed. Seeing there are none, public hearing is closed. Conditioners.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to act. In case PB 2025-53, a request for a CUP for a billboard sign. We're going to do these separately?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I would like to move that we recommend approval of this request, that we attach the standards used to evaluate conditional uses, and that we attach the following conditions, that prior to issuing a building permit, the applicant must procure any necessary permitting from I.DOT, that the applicant shall provide the city planner with a copy of the approved permits from I.DOT, that prior to installation, the applicant shall procure all required building and/or sign permits with the City of Kankakee, and that no part of the sign shall encroach the storm sewer easement or the drainage easement.
I have a motion by Deb Terrell.
I will second to that.
A second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warum?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The motion is recommended for approval.
Also, in case PB 2025-53, the request for a major variance to reduce the minimum setback from a residential zoning district from the minimum 500 feet to 266 feet. I believe that was increased to 282 with the 20-foot change.
Two hundred and...
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
Okay. To 286 feet for the real property presently bearing the PIN 16-09-34-100-033. I would like to recommend, no, I'm not going to recommend, we're going to give approval to this major variance. And... Are there findings attached? I guess there aren't.
No.
Yep, page three. Page three.
Page three.
Okay. Oh, okay, here we go. Yes, I would like to attach the standards used to evaluate variances, and they are satisfied.
And we have a motion by Deb Terrell for the conditional use per, permit. And approval, I'm sorry, for the major variance.
I will second again, Arturo Barajas.
And a second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warum?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The motion is, the major variance is granted.
Next case, PB 2025-5-4, a public hearing to consider text amendments to the Kankakee zoning ordinance. Proposed changes include changes throughout the ordinance to Chapter 2, definitions and rules, Chapter 3, general provisions, Chapter 11, signs, and Appendix A, planned and conditional use, uses by zoning district. City of Kankakee.
Okay. Are we considering this case before their case because it's necessary to have it completed before we hear their case?
Yes, yep. So, hopefully, the, the discussion on the cargo container stuff is not too long. I, after we brought the shipping container discussion to ordinance committee, and then ED, and then it came to planning board, and all three recommended that we decouple everything to help facilitate the applicant that was looking to move her shipping container onto, and really, at this point, what we're considering is an only-on-city property, subject-to-lease agreement. So, you'll see here, it's pretty, it's very simple. It's going to go in the zoning ordinance. I did recommend that sort of counsel, that it wouldn't be somewhere else in the municipal code where we couldn't find it, particularly since it's related to land use. So, there's two new definitions, one for what's considered urban farm, and then also cargo container, because we don't have that defined. And then, the, the requirements are that there's approval by city council, they get to approve the location, and they also have to approve a lease agreement. There was discussion in ordinance committee, originally they said annual lease agreement, but they wanted to pull back on that and allow that, because I think that what they were thinking is that maybe the first year it's an annual, and then they might let that go and make it every two years, and I think it just depends on a case-by-case basis, and they're going to handle that. They could do it annually if they want to. It's going to, the terms of that would be in the lease agreement.
Okay.
But they wanted the flexibility of being able to do that on their own. And then we have some basic requirements for what we'd need, we would need to see, which is like a, kind of a site plan, plot plan, name, address of the operator, as well as if the person who's constructing it or installing it onsite is different, so we wanted to know those few things. And that will just go in an application that they'll have to fill out. We would want to know what the setbacks are on the property, and just general information that we would normally see on a plan. And I think we discussed that even staff will probably help with this in some, some way, because it's on city property and presenting the packet to council. They will still need to procure any permits that are required, so it could be electrical, it could be, I mean, I don't know what it is, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but that those are still required, and that they have to procure any business licensing that's required as well. But it's pretty simple. We still don't have a site for Jenny, but we're working with her, and I think her target is fall for hoping to get up and running.
Yeah, this is Steve Case. I think this is great. I think this would allow some, you know, unique farming and business opportunities in the city, and good use of land.
Mm-hmm.
Are you looking for an action item?
Yes. This would be a recommendation.
Recommendation. Want any, audience?
It does require a hearing, so we do need to open. Yep, ready comment.
Any other questions, comments? I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. And are we ready to act?
Madam Chairman, in case PB 2025-54, we have a request to consider text amendments to Section 2.03 through 3.17, and I would like to make a motion that we recommend these changes. Recommend approval.
I will second that again. We got to get going.
I have a motion by Deb Terrell, and a second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warum?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The motion passes. Recommended for approval.
Case PB 2025-5-5, a public hearing to consider a request for conditional use permit for an electronic mess.
We, we have a part two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, and it'll have a separate motion, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. A little confusing. The, the second one is a discussion, the Kankakee School District contacted my office to have me look at a pole sign they're looking to install at Millie Preglor at 710 North Chicago, and upon reviewing the zoning ordinance, which they are, it is applicable to their, to the schools, realized that, because the property is on residential, what they're proposing is a pole sign, it also has a component of it that's an electronic message sign, neither of which are allowed. So, pole signs are not allowed in residential, and currently, and the electronic message signs are only allowed in C1, C2, C3 as a component of a monument sign currently, right now. So, there was some discussion back and forth about whether or not we would go a variance route, which I'm not super excited about. Again, that's a use variance, a lot like the conversation we just had about the Jeffers Project. Those tend to erode the zoning ordinance immediately, and it's not something that planning staff or even any of our legal counsel would support. So, looking at changing the code so this is allowed kind of across the board in some way to all institutional uses is really the better solution. So, the other, I think, I'm just going to put this on the record, because I think the better solution in reality is to probably have a P1 district or something similar, which is a public district that we could zone in, schools, churches, government buildings, and then regulate those uses better, because what we do find is that it's not just things like this, like signage for sure, I think allowances are usually bigger than what we normally see in residential areas, but also things like setbacks, like we have, and lot coverage for sure. I feel like lot coverage is something that a lot of times schools are fighting up against in zoning ordinances when they're in the residential, because the residential percentage is a lot lower than what a school or a church may need, based on just the sheer size of their structure. So, the other communities that I have worked in both had public districts, which those uses got zoned into. And I think that that's definitely a solution, but I think when looking at the feasibility and the timeline here with the skid, the school district has a pretty tight timeline, it just wasn't something that I thought that we would be able to handle quickly in creating a new district, so I think that's for future discussion, potentially. So, just putting that on the record. But, so what we're proposing here, and you can see up there, the new code would be in blue, anything that's, there's no strike-throughs in the pole sign, but on the next section of code, it's, anything taken out of the code is in red with strike-throughs. So, this basically just allows pole signs in R1, R2, R3 for institutional uses only. And then up at the top, this is not a change to the code, I just included it so you could see what the zoning code defines as an institutional use, which is a nonprofit, religious, or public use, such as a church, a library, public or private schools, hospitals, or government-owned or operated building structures or land. And that's really important here, because what we're adding here are regulations for any of these types of uses in any of these districts, and that includes any of our, we have a lot of churches. So, see, so the pole signs in particular, and that, those are, the regulations are right here, so, max of 15 feet, max of 100 square feet in copy area are all applicable, would all be applicable to those uses now. And those are, those would be permitted by right, okay? So, just coming in and getting a permit. The electronic message board, what is being recommended is that they, electronic message board signs allowed to be displayed as part of a permitted monument sign in C1, C2, C, I just reworded this, because it sounded better, C2, C3, that was existing. Electronic message signs are allowed to be displayed as part of a permitted monument or pole sign in R1, R2, R3 for institutional uses only. And then, secondarily, and this is how it's written in the rest of the code, it's a separate little bullet item, that those institutional uses in R1, R2, R3 are subject to a conditional use permit. So, every time they would want to put a, the electronic message board in, they would have to come in to see us, but not for the pole sign, but just to clarify that point. And then, there is a, I added the 3, which says, in no case shall it be larger than 40% of the sign. It's actually in the graphic right above here, it says it at the top, that the electronic message board, it's already in the code that way, but it's not in the regulations, and I felt like it needed to be in the actual regulations. So, I just added that in. It's just a reiteration of what's on the graphic. And then, the last piece that needed to be updated is the table that reflects those changes. And then I just added a clarification at the bottom that says that these would only be allowed in the R1, R2, R3 for the institutional uses only, just to be very clear. Let me know if you have any questions on this one.
Melissa, I have a question. This is Steve Case. So, if in, if in a neighborhood there's a church, or if in a neighborhood there's a house that becomes a church?
Mm-hmm.
They can, once they are a nonprofit, if, according to this, they can then have a pole sign.
Mm-hmm.
You just put a pole sign in the front yard. But if they want an electronic message board on that pole sign?
They have to come here.
It would be a conditional use permit.
Correct. And currently, those non-residential uses can already have like a monument sign. I mean, if they're, if they are truly a non-residential use, there's other signage that they can have already, too. It's just the, the pole sign regulation. But yes, electronic message component would have to come here for any of those uses.
Can you talk a little bit about these additional regulations that you're, at the bottom of page three, that you're recommending?
Page three. These are already in the code.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, additional regulations A through E. Those are all, all the black language is already in the code.
So, can I ask about enforcement? Because there are definitely, I mean, Barry and I drove by some signs on our way here that don't follow.
Yeah, I think if you, this is what I tell anyone, but if you do see signs and you have complaints about them, I think you can always contact the code enforcement officer that's for that ward. I don't mind taking them in myself as well, because oftentimes I'm helping those code enforcement officers understand how to read our sign code, because it's very difficult to understand if you've not worked in a sign code. So, I don't mind being copied on that, or even being contacted initially. But I don't always have my eyes on everything, so I think it's a matter of us knowing what potentially is non-compliant. I'm also not here at night very often, so I don't, what I do see a lot is window lights, which drive me crazy.
Sorry, one, one more clarification. With these additional regulations, there is something about having a photometric plan demonstrating compliance with this chapter as a condition to issue a sign permit. Again, so that comes back to that question of.
There's an existing regulation, the photometric requirement is existing, and we can take it in if we, if we need, if we feel like we need to. Yeah. The way that we, the, the brightness on the screens, it's in a different, it's in a different chapter, which actually, I apologize, it's not in here, it's actually in the conditional uses at the back. The illumination standards are on the, in the next staff report, it's on page 11, and 12 are the existing illumination standards, but in here, it talks about how we measure the, it's actually the luminance that comes off the screen, and it's measured in nits. We can get into the weeds if you really want to. I, when I worked in Homer, they're a dark-skies community, so I have, like, kind of ridiculous about experience talking about how to measure this stuff, but nits are actually really difficult to measure. There is a formula that you can convert from lumens, but it's not exact, it's not exact science, there's a lot of, from what I understand, there's, the ambient light gets in the way of that, like, measurement based on the lumens, and so then, that is not a very clear formula. There is a formula, they say, but maybe you know better, I don't know, since you have a science background, I don't know. But from what I've read, that it's not an exact relation, and so you really do need like a nit meter, and it's, there's a specific kind of thing, and they do, a really, you can buy cheap ones off Amazon that are like in the hundreds, but they're, the really good ones are like thousands of dollars. I mean, we didn't even have one in Homer, and they're a dark-sky community, and they were crazy about lighting, and they didn't allow electronic message boards, but it's really the best way to read a screen. And it's, from what I understand, it's the way, the luminance is the way that the human eye sees that brightness, so it's a little different than how, what lumens are, which is what you typically get with a light meter.
So, just to be clear, we have something in the code about this not being greater than 5,000 nits, but we... than 5,000 nits, but we don't have any way at the code enforcement office or in the city to actually measure that?
Correct.
So I am concerned about, I feel like the, the electronic signs we have in the city now are too bright-
Right.
They're too visually noisy.
Mm-hmm.
Many of them are not updated, many of them are not working correctly. And I would like to see us regulate that before we open the door to even more of these, these digital, electronic lights, electronic signs.
Yeah. I don't know, I know how to answer that question, Steve, because I feel like this is not a Kankakee problem. I feel like it's a problem with the way that this stuff gets measured. The other thing that, and bourbonet, that regulates based on foot candles, like near the edge of it, but I don't know if that's the best, that's just ambient light hitting the ground at a certain distance, it's not how we, as humans, perceive the screen brightness. So, I, I mean, the, probably the best is to take it from the lumen and do the conversion, that's probably the best unless we're gonna invest in a very nice piece of equipment.
Well, true, but that's just one part of these other regulations about being a static image, being kept in good repair, being all these other, I feel like those aren't really enforced either.
Right, where you're seeing them do this, instead of like the 10 seconds, like the, they're changing constantly.
Right, they're eyeshores.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I, I hate to say no to a school district, right? I don't want, I don't want to say no to Kankakee-
Mm-hmm.
But I don't want to say yes to allowing these signs in residential zoned, residential zoned areas.
You know, Chip Roarum, and going along with what Steve's talking about, the way I was looking at this, it's like, okay, if I lived on Chicago Avenue across from the school, and this sign were up, how would it affect me? And then when? You know, it's, it's, it's one thing about when the school is active, or, you know, or early in the evening when we're all still up and doing things, but as you will get deeper and deeper into the night, I, you know, I really wonder if we've got a problem with that. Again, in terms of the quality of the light for the, for the residential aspect of the neighborhood, the school's dark, we got the sign that's lit up, you know, does it, does it sleep? I, I think I would prefer to see it sleep, and then wake up-
Mm-hmm.
-and to be lit as a nightlight all night long. And, and as far as I'm concerned, diminish the integrity of a residential-
Area.
Environment.
Correct.
And we can, maybe, I mean, maybe the, you know, the folks who are here to speak on behalf of this next case will have some things to say to this, but, I mean, there's a sign very similar to this at Kennedy, my kids attended Kennedy, and it's, it's not nice, it's not a nice sign, and it's often not doing the things it's supposed to be doing. As just one example, again, not to pick on the school district, but as just one example of one of these electronic signs.
Mm-hmm, they're difficult to enforce, for sure. And even when code enforcement's on top of it, it's still is very, because we don't have any control over their actual, like, the, the control of the sign, the person who operates it does. So, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, it's okay. I was just gonna say that the person that lives across the street from that sign is greatly annoyed by it. It's just short enough that it's just right in his windows.
And I would, again, just to speak more, more widely to the issue, not specifically for the schools, but for, you know, any of these nonprofits, I don't necessarily see why it's necessary to have, to have this information. How many, how many people get their information from an electronic sign that's constantly changing? I mean, the churches downtown that have these messages, for the most part, they're silly graphics, they're not really giving you information about the time that the church meets, or things like that.
Without too much moving back and forth between two requests here, I felt that way too, but specific to the upcoming request-
Mm-hmm.
-when I drove over there at 8 o'clock in the morning, I think it was, and saw that both sides of the street were lined with cars, and there was no way that a monument sign would have been visible to people coming and going, dropping off. So, it did occur to me that a pole sign of, what, 12 feet, might be necessary in this particular situation, because the cars obscure any view of, and I couldn't see any place they could put a monument sign where you could see over the cars and see it.
True.
And I believe that they are prepared to agree to not illuminate it after a certain hour, right?
Yeah. For their, so this would, the next case is, is a request for a conditional use permit, obviously, that needs this, needs something in order for that request to be viable.
Mm-hmm.
They are, they offered to have the restriction in there of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I mean, and that's certainly something that we can add to the, the ordinance itself as well, Steve, that none of these would be considered, much like the stuff we were just talking about, the billboards, there's just some basic things you gotta check the box on in order to even apply, to be heard by the planning board and the council, and that could be that the restriction is that no sign in these areas is allowed to be illuminated after, before 7:00 AM or after 7:00 PM.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, isn't that already in?
It's not.
Well, on page 11, they have the hours of operation.
Sign illumination, hours of operation.
Right.
But does that specifically apply to a-
Which, which page are you looking at? So, the illumination standards, they do apply to these types of signs, and right now, the way the code reads, if they're not further regulated, either in this section, like the electronic message board section, or under a conditional use permit for a specific site, would be illuminated, signs facing residential should be turned off at 11:00 PM until 7:00 AM, or 30 minutes after close of business, whichever is later. Uses that remain in operation between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, which are like 24-hour businesses, are exempt from this requirement. So they can keep their sign on all night. Now, Steve, we can, this, the sign code, the whole sign chapter was in our public hearing notice.
Yeah.
So we can certainly change the illumination standards here, if we want to address this, if you want to make recommendations for that, and not do it here, and this would also apply to the conditional use permit as well. And this would apply, these are general provisions that apply everywhere, except in this sentence, it's specifically for signs that are across the street from residential. But they would be in any district, C1, C2, C3.
Right.
Correct.
And, and you said that, Melissa, you said that, in this one example, it was 7 to 11:00 PM, or to when the business closed, whichever is greater?
Yeah, 11, so they have to turn off between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, current regulations, or 30 minutes after close of business, whichever is later.
Whichever is later.
Uh-huh, and uses that remain in operation between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, which are like our permanent 24-hour businesses, or just ones that have a later open date, could be bar, could be, you know, I don't know what uses those are, are exempt from this requirement during the period of operation. So if they have business hours until 3:00 AM, and they have an electronic sign, and they are across from residential, they can keep it on, current, by current standards.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, whichever is later, I was thinking 7 to 7, we're talking about, you know, when the business closes.
Right, if they have later hours than 11.
Yeah.
Yep.
So are there any other questions regarding the tax amendments for this- for this Kankakee zoning ordinance? No other questions, comments?
Steve, do you, would, are you amenable to that, if that's added, or is that still not enough, do you feel? I think headed into people, someone in the room making a motion, I think it would be good to be clear.
Sure, yeah, I think it's a question, again, I think it's a question of enforcement, and I would, I would, I think that the easiest thing to prevent obnoxious electronic signs is to simply not expand their, their permitted use into residential districts. So I, I think I would still vote no.
Okay. Got it.
This is why we have hearings, I thought I knew-
How you were gonna feel about it?
Now I'm uncertain. Steve raised-
And I am taking, I am considering some very general terms-
Yep.
I understand it throws a wrench into the next, perhaps, case, but I'm, I'm trying to, you know, in, in more broader terms, that would be, that would be my, what I would want to do.
Let me also clarify this, are you okay with the pole signs?
Not really, not in a residential zone.
Okay.
I love your idea about an extra zoning district, but I think that's a, that's a bigger decision.
A much bigger task, yeah.
But I'm just one vote, I'm comfortable voting, voting no, and, yeah.
Chip Roarum, is, is there a way that we can treat this sign aspect of what's acceptable for a sign, like we would treat a PUD? A PUD, just to say, we'd have to determine the illumination requirements on a sign-by-sign basis? I mean, that may be crazy, but-
That's pretty much what this does with the conditional use permit requirement.
It does, because every one of them would have to come in front of the planning board.
And we can control-
You could.
-if they are on or not, or if, when they go off and when they go on.
And then also the council can revoke it, which right now, if they're just, if the ones that are up, that are getting, that are allowed to be up through just a permit, I mean, unless they're violating and we can prove that, I mean, I think that it, the council has much more ability to just revoke this conditional use if, if it's a problem and there's non-compliance.
Will that actually happen if the signs, if the sign's purchased and installed? I mean-
I understand, yeah.
I would prefer to prevent more signs than-
Yeah.
Has there been any communication from anyone regarding?
Um, we, I did have a phone call from a property owner, she doesn't live there, she has renters. She, this was about the case. She had concerns about the impact to residents, particularly elderly residents, concerns included brightness, potential light pollution, impact to nighttime privacy of those residents that are on their porches, impact to sense of security, and potential impact to property values. I don't know if that's justified or not, I don't have a opinion about how this might impact property values. Landowner also mentioned that it doesn't seem like the school would need this for disinformation since they have so limited ways to facilitate communication these days, but, that's, and she wanted to remain anonymous.
This is a particular conundrum, it has been since the beginning, but more so at this particular moment, because Steve raises such a good point. This is another instance of us sitting here discussing the ability to monitor these conditions that we set forth on these signs. And since we historically have not had any, I don't want to use the word cooperation, but we have not had any involvement from code enforcement, and we discuss that at meeting after meeting after meeting, it does feel like there needs to be something, some discussion, some conversation taking place between city council, the mayor's office, and code enforcement, as to how we handle this, because we're sitting here spinning our wheels, meeting after meeting after meeting, expanding and approving the many, many, many new lighted signs. I just noticed tonight that the place that had the chasing lights on Court Street, the vape shop, they finally took down their chasing lights, and now they have a big electronic thing there that's changing pictures and stuff. So it's like, wait a minute, you know, we just, we've lost control of this. And I feel like we really need to get something in place and get some control before, as Steve said, we keep expanding the number and the areas, the, the zoning areas that we allow these. And I too, I want very much to cooperate with our school district, our schools are great neighbors, it's, it's just a, a hard place to be. And I'm wondering if whatever we decide on these two proposals, if we shouldn't, as a planning board, request a formal discussion with city council about the, what's the word I'm looking for, how, how we enforce the sign regulations? I think we can do that, can't we? Can we put in a formal request?
Mm-hmm.
So whatever way, you know, the, the members want to go on this, I think we should do that.
Is it already open? Did you open it? Not yet? Uh, yeah, we should.
All right. I'm gonna open up public hearing, if there's anyone who wants to speak on this subject, you may come and do so at this time. If you could state your name.
Hi, my name is Brian Pensak, I'm the LA Architects on behalf of the Kankakee School District.
And if you could raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, proceed.
Maybe a suggestion would be to, well, for educational institution, maybe you make it more specific rather than just institution. For, in a residential area, we would still have to come to for conditional use permit for an electronic sign. That would, I think, help a little bit, you know, or if, like you were saying, Ms. King, the zoning district is changed, or schools, to a public, or a, educational institution zone, specifically for schools. That would be, we would ask for that consideration. I guess I'll stop there and come back up for the other hearing to talk about, I know this leads into the other conditional use. I know you guys were kind of talking about both back and forth, is it okay to, to talk about the conditional use at the same time, or you wanna wait?
You certainly can, but we're, we are gonna hear that case, we have to, it's an application, it's got a hearing that's been noticed for. The final determination on these code amendments doesn't lie here, it lies with council anyways, so this planning board can make, but, so I think you can certainly mention something now, but I also think that we can, I mean, we're gonna run right into that, but if you have something that you'd like to add.
Sure. Maybe the purpose for the, the school district for asking for this electronic signs, for, you know, school visibility, community awareness, particularly families, visitors, and, and we suggested that we would have the sign only on from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the electronic portion. So not to disturb any of the neighbors. And, 5,000 nit, that would be the sign, they can, right, you know, from the manufacturer, they can put it at a limit, we can't have the sign turned off at 7:00 PM. And the, the school board, which is nice, has school board meetings at different schools throughout the year. And one of the meetings, and Millie Preglor, if not familiar, is a, kind of head start preschool for three or four-year-olds. So, to have that sign on at 7:00 PM, when, you know, just before a school board meeting, when community members are coming to attend the school board, would be great. Frequency of the changing of the sign, we'd like to keep it at no more than once every 10 seconds. I mean, like you were saying, you know, when you bring a child up to drop him off, you want to be able to, the district wants to be able to convey as many quick informations they can, school registration, days off. And longer periods- And longer periods just doesn't get that information to the person, to the, to the community, quick enough. There would be no video or flashing. It would have, it would be, there are, we, we, the sign does have an ability to have images with text. They're little kids, they're little, you know, we would like to have some nice creative, creative sign, electronic portion, you know, to photos, you know, of the students too, as part of the text. Yeah, I think that's, and, and you guys were discussing to the point of having the sign elevated versus a lower monument sign, to be able to see over cars that are parked. It would be nice to see those messages if you're driving down the street and are parked cars. And we would be, you know, willing to, I'm sure the district would be willing to look at their other signs and bring them in compliance with, with the zoning ordinance. Thank you for your consideration too, for on behalf of the school district.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
There is a representative from the school district, Mr. Bill Draper, is a director of maintenance too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa, do we have that ability and, I mean, to, on that idea of limiting this to, right, on page two, under your definitions, use institutional, right, a nonprofit, religious, or public use, is it possible to make that as specific as only educational use? How would you distinguish between, you know, as a library and educational institution? Or could you make it as specific as Kankakee District 111? Like, they would be able to have these electronic signs in residential areas, but no one else could.
I don't like that from a planning perspective.
Okay, good, no.
I, I think that the narrower that you get, that easier it would be for us to be, like, challenged by someone, so like, that's my, my only, my only concern. It doesn't mean that you can't regulate that way or recommend that. But the churches, for instance, will be the ones that are pushing that, why them and not us? Like, why are, we're similar in the things that we provide, and maybe they have similar things they also want to get out to the public, maybe they have a program too for preschoolers. You know, I think that there becomes a very gray area with those, those are all, those are usually the reasons why. And in fact, in my best practice as a planner, there's actually a preference for that, like, P1 district. So there's a district regulation versus us even nitpicking this institutional use within the district because really, that even still opens you up. Like, when you start to pull uses out and just regulate those. That's why you oftentimes see just residential versus non-residential, those are much more justified. But then to tease out something from commercial and into like its own little subsect starts to really become gray. And it's, mostly it's just like legal protection, you know, from getting challenged for those things. You want to be less or unbiased. So can you do it? Sure, can you, can you recommend that? Sure. I just, I think that that will, we'll see what council says to that. They may ask our attorney, counsel with a C I L, and they may ask our counsel with a S E L, what their opinion is on that, but they may not, I mean, I, I don't know.
Okay. So it sounds like we could recommend that, but you are recommending, you would not recommend that we recommend that?
Well, I think I'm just always thinking of, I, I hear you all about the concerns about opening it up to a lot of land uses, and of course, it was on my brain because when I opened this conversation, like, I know how many churches we have, there's a lot. And almost all of them are probably in residential districts because they're set up the way churches are always set up, they're just like schools, they're infiltrated right in the middle of all of those, they're typically not in your commercial corridors, they're right there in the neighborhoods. And so these allowances do open it up to quite a few opportunities. So, and I know churches like signage.
Well, that's the thing, there's a, there's a larger question here of, is there a genuine need to communicate information through these electronic signs? I understand, you know, hey, there's going to, there's a board meeting and there's going to be a day that the school is closed, that's one thing. But again, you know, if, if the church down the road has an electronic sign and it does really cool things and it seems to be getting attention, then the church, you know, the, the next church wants an electronic sign as well.
That is happening.
And it, exactly.
It does happen.
We see it right, right here downtown.
I will tell you that even working in the Village of Homer Glen, it was interesting to watch, they highly regulate these, they don't want them at all, they don't have them. Right, and the allowance did come up for discussion and we talked about it again one time that I was there, and it never really went anywhere, they wanted to pull it out, put it in a P1, only allow it for whatever, but then they didn't want to do that either. But then internally, having a conversation with our, like, events people about wanting to get the word out about stuff, and then the conversation about wanting to have one comes up, you know, because I think that the people who are marketing stuff, the people who are trying to get the information, it does mean a lot to them to get this out. And I think that we've seen manual changeable message boards forever with information on it to try to get either commercial information or public information out to the public. And these are just, I guess, what you would say is the wave of the future because it's easier to change that messaging, you know, versus having to do it like.
Right, but once you have an electronic message board and you say, well, keep it static, but then the people that want to get the events out are, yeah, but if the text splashes in, it gets the information out even better. And if the text is a little bit brighter and waves around and it's very colorful, then it gets the message out even better, so.
And that is really difficult to regulate, no matter how good of a job your code enforcement officers are doing. It is really hard to regulate across the board in every community. Because.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I know another business up north, we won't name, but like, they would regulate, they would turn it back off and two days later they start doing the same thing again. And it was just, and you couldn't stay on top of them. So I, but I don't know, there's a discussion about throwing the baby out with the bathwater, I don't know, you know, and I, I don't know, I don't know my recommend, I think this is hard, this is hard, I get, I understand. I feel like the proposal that's in front of you with the conditional use on these is probably the tightest you're going to get it, you know. A lot of communities require these for all uses, even the conditional ones, you know. If they're going to allow them at all, they want to know what's on the list, who has them, what's the list, and how we have control over them, you know.
Say that one more time.
Like, being able to have that list of people who have conditional use permits, like, having liquor licensing, you know, and having the list of people who have those allowances, if you will. But you're right about the reality of revoking when it comes to it.
I was just, I mean, I agree with both of you, I mean, Steve, but I was just thinking to myself, for some reason, we're not talking about like a, a sign for a bar or, you know, we're talking for a school, and it could be safety reasons too, we don't know exactly, but I recommend it for approval, I mean, uh, it wouldn't, like I said, we're not talking about a liquor store, a bar. I mean, I probably, you know, this is a school, our school districts and our churches, I really respect, you know, things like that. So that's my opinion.
That's a good point.
Well, a motion has to be made, one way or the other.
Let me close the public hearing for, for this particular.
In, in the interest of moving forward, I'm going to make a motion that we, with reservations, that we recommend approval of the text amendment changes in case PB 202554 with the conditions set forth by the planning department that are enumerated on page three, and we'll see if it sticks to the wall. Anyway.
Could we add, and we, our people would be, would be interested in, in saying that we would urge a meeting with enforcement to discuss this further?
I think we should do that as a separate request at the end of the meeting.
As long as it gets read in, I, I think, I think.
It could be under other, other business.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
A good idea.
So we have a motion.
I have it written out.
We have a motion by Deb Taylor.
I would second that.
And a second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Deb Taylor.
I have to vote yes.
Chip Roarke?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
No.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Six one, the motion passes. Next case. PB 2025-5-5, a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit for an electronic message sign for a certain real property located at 710 North Chicago Avenue, Kankakee, Illinois, Millie Pragler School, presently bearing the following property tax ID number, Will the applicant for this case please come forward? If you could state your name again, just for the record, I've always wanted.
Sure, Brian Pensac with DLA Architects, representing the Kankakee School District.
Okay. Any other questions?
He does have to swear, he's not willing to swear, right?
I already did that, I already did, I did that earlier.
He was willing.
No other questions?
So I have a question. Would this be the place to say, you know, we would grant this conditional use permit and we would ask the school district to apply, you know, they have daily hours of operation restricted to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Would this be the place to ask them to apply that to, you know, all of the signs in the school district or something?
Uh, say that one more time.
I'm sorry.
The last sentence I didn't catch.
So would it be appropriate if we were granting conditional use permit, would this be the place to make that conditional on, hey, the things you guys have said you're going to do for this sign, we would ask the school district to do for all of the electronic signs that they already have? So all of the electronic signs in the school district do indeed go off at 7:00 p.m. And Deb's neighbor across the street from Kennedy isn't annoyed anymore either?
That's a lot.
Feel like we can because.
No.
I, this is, there's, yeah, I mean, I haven't, I'm, it's just late.
Yeah, it's part of this, it's not part of this case.
It's like I want to help, you know, I want to say yes, Steve, but it is, it's a case by case, land case tied to this address only.
Right.
Um, I think that what we would need to do, thank you for just pulling me out of that for a second, that we would need to have the school district apply for the same thing. They could do one application for all those addresses and we could hear them all because there's only, I think I have a list of them, but there's only, I think there's like four. One, two, you said there's one in Kennedy. I didn't, I couldn't see that one from my desktop review, and I didn't get out in the field for that one, but.
On Hawkins.
High School, Kennedy, King.
Taft, I think is, is that on Hawkins?
Lincoln Cultural Center has one, and Avis Huff. And a number of these are across from residential, LCC is, Avis Huff is. King.
Could also we?
Yes, they're all, yeah, they're all adjacent to residential, so just, yeah.
We did reapply, could we say there's, there's schools that, because I think the district was planning on adding signs to all the schools that don't, maybe don't have signs to, could we add those schools as well to?
You can, you could, I mean, the thing is.
Does it have to be individual?
The thing is, is that these permits, if you don't act on them with, with the conditional starts, if you don't act on them with the actual construction permit, then they expire. And I really don't want to get into this, like, where we're extending and extending for years until the school district finds capital. But I think what you can do is that we could put a condition in here that we ask them to apply to bring their other signs into compliance, so we could ask them to apply.
So just so I'm clear, because this is a good, this is a good, this policy question, because this is related to a specific site, a specific address, it's not appropriate to sort of.
Regulate those signs on other properties.
Even though it's the same organization.
Correct.
It would need, okay, perfect, thank you.
Right, but we can do one conditional use permit for multiple addresses if that's the way the application comes in and we notice for the public hearing for those properties because we just send letters out for all those, those properties as well and those residents would also get the chance to come in and weigh in. So, and again, to clarify with that application, we would not be able to revoke, take their signs down. I mean, it would just be an opportunity to regulate those signs and bring them into compliance with the new conditional use permit. But as long as those signs are standing, they're going to be subject to those, the non-conforming code section now, which they can just stay, they can do repairs, they can do all that, they, you know, they, those signs can stand. Even if they came in, in front of us and we were denied or something in the future. Like, if they came forward with the conditional use permit and for some reason they did not get approved. I can't see why, Steve, but I just wanted to clarify that those signs would still be able to stand because they're, they're existing. I will also mention that I think all the other signs are not full picture. I don't think any of the other signs are full picture, maybe one, Avis Huff was the only one that I saw that were full picture.
High school.
Yeah, the rest of them are all black background with just text.
No other questions, commissioners? Public hearing is open for this case. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this case? You may do so at this time. Hello, hello, please state your name, please.
William Draper, I'm the director of maintenance for Kankakee School District.
Anything could raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
Just a little bit what I wanted to add, what Brian said and your concerns, especially at the sign in Kennedy. But the district is so large, a lot of times when we act on certain things, it's only get complaints, phone calls to superintendent's office or my office. If, if you would like to reach out to that person, I have him in contact myself, I could definitely work on that sign or any other signs in the district, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing closed.
Any other questions, comments? We're ready to act.
I also want to clarify, if you've not read through the conditions that I presented, I recommended that the message change no more than 10 minutes, but I really don't have a lot of bearing for that except that I thought across from residential, we'd need something to start talking about. The school district obviously came up and did request that they would, I don't know if you heard him say that, but he would prefer that it stay with the 10, every 10 seconds. So I just want to be clear about what the, before a motion is read, what that recommendation should be.
I, I understood him to say that 10 seconds was very, very long, you know, if you're just, if you're just driving by or something. So it sounded like they would like it to be more often than 10 seconds, but perhaps I misunderstood.
No, I think he wanted to keep it at the 10 seconds.
Okay.
To meet, which is what code.
No more than, okay, okay, thank you.
Are we ready to move?
I have one more question for the architect.
If you can come up to the microphone too, that, thank you.
I just want to verify that this particular electronic sign does have the capability to lower the intensity of the.
Yes, we confirmed that with the manufacturer.
Okay. And what happens if there's a failure? There's a sign downtown that's driving me insane right now because it's got like four big white blocks on it. right now, because it's got like four big white blocks on it, and no message. What, what, what's to prevent?
Oh, failure meaning it stays illuminated and doesn't change?
That there's no message displayed, it's just partially illuminated or something.
We filed the superintendent's office.
Yeah, please reach out and-
Service call.
But there's no built-in system whereby if there's a failure, it turns off?
That's what the code says, Deb. I, this is a good question. It does say that in the code. It says it's supposed to go back to-
I can look into that further and get back to you guys. I'm not, I don't know.
It says backup for mechanical failure must default to a single message, the event, in the event of failure.
Yeah.
Oh, please fix.
That would be, that would be the good message.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be just that message. Like you said, we meet the code. We would follow the code.
Okay.
Are we ready to act?
Madam Chairman, with the caveat that this is all conditional on whether or not city council passes the previous motion that we just made.
Mm-hmm. That's condition number one.
Yeah, okay. I would like to move that in case PB 202555, the request for a CUP for an electronic message sign for 710 North Chicago Avenue, Millie Pragler School, that we recommend approval with the following, with the findings set forth by the planning office, but also with the following conditions. Number one, the approval and passage of text amendments to the zoning code that modify the allowance of poll signs and electronic messages for institutional uses in a residential zoned property. That the electronic message sign must meet all of the requirements of the electronic message signs in the new zoning code, section 1105. The electronic message sign is only allowed as a component of the permitted poll sign and may not stand alone. The electronic message sign shall change messages no more than once every 10 minutes. Is that right? 10 minutes?
Ten seconds.
This says 10 minutes.
This says 10 minutes, yeah. Which is it, 10 minutes?
Well, that's what I was just saying. I recommended longer, but in order for us to have a discussion about it. But the school district is asking for 10 seconds, which is what meets code.
Okay, 10 seconds then. And the city planner shall perform a final inspection after the sign has been installed to verify compliance. And that the daily hours of operation are restricted from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that a request, we also request that District 111 submit an application to permit all existing electronic signs and those planned for the future.
Do we have a second?
Barry McCracken, I'll second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Wurm?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The motion passes. And the case is recommended for approval, and will be, hopefully, on the June 2nd city council.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion. Oh, let me find my notes here. All right. I would like to make a motion that we formally request to initiate a conversation with city council members, the mayor's office, and code enforcement regarding the enforcement of lighted, of light emanating signs. We find this necessary due to the rapid expansion of lighted signs in the area, and request to further expand areas where they're allowed.
Deb, do you, would you consider the possibility also of talking about lights that extend beyond the boundaries of the property? Because there's a lot of that going on, too. Just violations of light levels. You want to keep that separate?
I, I think we should probably keep that separate, because the big thing that we're dealing with right now is the lighted signs. And also, if we did the whole light curtain thing or extending on properties, that would be every single light in the city.
There's some-
Quite frankly.
But, you know, okay, I'll-
I will recommend to keep it to one topic.
Very good. Stand down.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell, a second by Steve Case. Any questions?
Let me clear, hang on a second. I'm not sure that we can make, take action on something like this. I think you can make a, a recommendation, because it's not specifically on the agenda to take action on. So I think you can make a recommendation to get consensus by the planning board. If everybody's under consensus, then I can relay this information.
So just an aye?
Just an aye.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. And I want to congratulate Chip Wurm and Jose Arturo Barajas for their appointment to the board for another three-year term.
Yay.
Congratulations. And Susan Lopez is no longer with us due to her appointment with Kankakee School District on their board. Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
Somebody?
Motion by Steve Case, second by Barry McCracken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would really-